Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 13th, 2019, to order. Can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Nielsen?
Sure. Mrs. Winkowski?
Here.
Mr. Gamble?
Here.
Mr. Lewis?
Here.
Mrs. Larson?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Alexandrovich is excused tonight, and I am here.
Thank you. The meeting has been properly posted. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. For item three, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Witkowski, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item four is community comment. Are there any community members who would like to make a comment? Any comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to item five, approval of the consent agenda. Would any board member like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Gamble. All those in favor of the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, school board announcements, are there any board announcements?
I just would like to announce the foundation events that are coming up. There's a trivia night event April 4th, and there's also consignment sale on April 13th. And I think their website will, I did check, wasn't all on there, but I would expect it to be there soon. Or else Facebook is another way that they advertise that.
Thank you. I'd also like to announce, just for the board, that you should have received an email from the Health Department, Ms. Juliana Mansky yesterday. I just want to remind you that the 2019 tobacco prevention poster contest is underway, and you've been invited to judge that. And if you'd like to judge it, you should have your votes in by March 27th. And if you don't want to judge it, please respond to her email so she knows you're not interested in judging it. Any other announcements?
I don't know whether this is the right place for it or not, but in your Keeping the Board Inform, you sent out the letter from Rachel DePiro regarding the school bus driver.
Uh huh, yeah.
And is there some way we can recognize her as far as, I don't know what her name is?
Oh, the bus driver.
The bus driver.
Right, right, so we're working with the bus company.
You are?
Yes.
Okay, okay, because that should be done for this incident.
Yeah, she did a very nice job.
Yes.
Didn't care about student.
But for all of you, just so you know what we're talking about, the bus driver dropped somebody off at their home, and there was a white pickup truck that kind of followed the bus and stopped when the bus driver let this young girl off. And the bus driver was suspicious. She pulled ahead a little bit to see what the pickup truck did, and the pickup truck just stayed there. So the bus driver was concerned about the safety of the student, called the police. They did a welfare check and found out it was a contractor that was working at the house. But the bus driver did a great job, so she should be recognized in some way.
Uh huh, thank you. Any other announcements? Alright, hearing none. We'll move on to item seven, school board calendar. We have a regular Board of Education meeting Wednesday, March 27th, 2019, here at the Education and Community Center at 6 o'clock PM, and a regular Board of Education meeting here April 10th, 2019, at 6 o'clock PM. And then item eight, reports, presentations, and other school board business. 8A, the athletic and activities report with Mr. Heine. Welcome. We'll see you.
Thank you.
If I can ask, when I turn my mic on, are the presentations that we want to shuffle into the best seats?
Okay, sounds working? Awesome. Alright, well, good evening, board members and community members. My name is Jordan Heine, I'm the Athletics and Activities Director at Franklin Public Schools. Currently housed, and my office is at the high school, but I also oversee the development of the programming at the middle school as well, and we're very excited about expanding to sixth grade next year. So as we go through this presentation, if you have questions, anything like that, I can take questions at the end, and then we can continue that conversation. Just a real brief recap, kind of where we are year-to-date. Our average fall and winter sport athletes, in terms of their practices and planning for their competitions, were averaging about 13 hours of training or practice per week. Our fall and winter coaches are averaging about 18 hours of training prep and administration per week. We had 574 fall athletes, we had 44 fall coaches, that would include paid coaches and volunteers. We had 224 winter athletes and 33 winter coaches. And if we take a running total, this is something that we share with our athletes on a, every time we have our code meetings, so before we kick off a new season, just to help them recognize that they are part of a larger team and that we're all in this together. We are nearing that 100,000-hour mark for our students and coaches putting in that time and investing into making themselves better, being part of a team representing our school community. So we're very proud of that. Some of our current year-to-date results, we just kicked off our spring season, but we're having a very successful school year so far in terms of how our athletics teams are performing. We've had six conference championships, seven regional championships, we have five team sectional finalists, so we are one event or one game away from the state tournament. We've had 26 individual state qualifiers for those that compete in individual sports, three team state qualifiers. Our gymnastics team and our dance team were state champions this year. And we've had three coaches either elected as the SEC head coach of the year or the SEC, that's our conference assistant coach of the year. So lots of success, lots of pride building, rolling into our spring season, and we're excited to continue that. We have some great numbers in terms of students that are trying sports for the first time. So our numbers are looking great as we move into the spring season. Throughout all of our sports, we're averaging a second-place finish within our conference. So if we go back to that first slide with our six conference championships, right now that's our team average across all of our sports. And the one that I'm very proud of is our average student athlete and activity member GPA. Cumulative, as of the end of the first semester of this school year, is a 3.47. So our kids are crushing it on the field of play, in competition, and representation of the Franklin community, but they're also doing a phenomenal job in the classroom. And, you know, that's a kudos to our staff at the high school and our students being able to balance the challenges of athletics and activities participation and rigorous coursework. Some of our numbers, in terms of participation data relating to Title IX, we've had 500 female student athletes, this is for our last completed school year, so 17 and 18. 500 female student athletes, 578 male student athletes, a difference of 2.43% based on our male-female enrollment at the high school. So we're well within Title IX expectations. As we look at our activities numbers, we will see that we have higher numbers of females related to, or involved in activities, so that'd be like our clubs, musical-type activities compared to males, and so that's a goal that we're setting to address to move forward. And then on the bottom there, we also have our relative data from the 16-17 school year, where we are looking at a 2.76% difference. And again, one of the things we're proud of is that increase in participation numbers. We went from 412 to 500 over the course of a year, from 458 to 578, and our numbers this year look to continue that trend, so we're very excited about that. Our programs are growing, and we're also doing well in the classroom and in competition. Just as our, just as the schools are working through improvement teams, the Athletics and Activities Department also has an improvement team. We have a panel of coaches, parents, and advisors. We meet bi-monthly in person, and then we communicate regularly through email so I can provide them with updates and they can provide feedback from their, kind of their lens of how they view the program or the department. We've set short-cycle goals and annual goals to support the district coherence plan. Our main goal right now is to really focus on increasing participation, especially looking at how many students we have participating in 2+ sports or activities. Because we see, there's research that would show that those that are involved in 2+ have stronger outcomes in the classroom, they have, you know, they leave high school more career and college-ready. We're also looking at ways to maximize our activity engagement and the potential within our programs, looking at ways that we can engage the community, engage the middle school as they transition to high school. How do we engage parents, looking at it from almost like running like a, like a small college or, almost like a, you know, in terms of our marketing of our events, how can we get better at that? And that's, the goal with that is to unify our community, parent, and student support of our programs. Running parallel to that, we have an Athletics and Activities Council, so those, that's all based on, those are all represented by students. One rep from each sport and activity, we meet monthly at the high school during the school day. We have four teams, four committees within that council. We have a student recognition committee, our community and alumni outreach, Saber Pride event marketing, and then a cooperative improvement team, so they're, that team is answering questions directly from the improvement team and providing feedback channels from students to the adults on the team. And that team collaborates with me and the adult team to pursue goals of increased participation and awareness of our events, and we work to continuously address the real or perceived barriers to participation. So looking at our numbers that we have now, and why are we, you know, which groups of students can we serve in a better way? How do we continue to grow our programs so that that 3.47, the students that are performing really well because they're so heavily connected and involved, how do we get kids to engage in that with us? One of the things that we're planning to continue to do is outreach to the middle school and try to improve that transition from eighth grade to freshman year. And one of the things that we completed just recently is we're, we produced a short video that follows the NFHS campaign, For My Reason Why, and they kind of talk about like, this is why I choose to participate in high school activities, and so we can watch that now.
I'm really proud of the Athletics and Activities programs that we offer here at Franklin High School, not just because of the success that we see when students are competing and representing the Franklin community, more importantly, the process behind that personal growth, that development, the focus on well-being, the relationships they're building with peers.
Most rewarding thing for me personally about getting involved in Franklin High School was just the idea to make these quality connections that I know that I never would have made in Franklin High School. Being able to really truly understand my peers was super valuable.
To think about how much I've grown and changed in my self-confidence and how driven I am to pursue certain passions. It really has helped me grow as a person, and through that, as I grew myself, I was able to help others grow and others find their passions as well.
One thing that inspires me as an athlete is the drive to get better every day and the commitment to always make the most out of every practice and game. It's a perfect balance between being in the classroom and being able to represent your community.
Athletics and activities have helped us create memories and remember the challenges that helped us get to the success.
Football and sports at Franklin High School has taught me that to be a better leader, to be a better person, to be a better man.
In 10 years, it's not going to matter if I got first, second, or third place or whatever I ended up getting. What's going to matter is the memories that I created with my teammates.
The people around you, no matter what the sport is, are all going to be pushing and working just as hard as you are. And if someone's working harder, that just pushes you to work that much harder yourself. And so by surrounding yourself with people who are positive, are working hard, it's only going to benefit you in the long run.
Self-discipline, time management, accountability. If you really step out of your comfort zone, it'll make you such a better person and you'll learn so many more life skills from it.
Being involved in extracurricular activities has allowed me to become a better person. Forensics has taught me public speaking, which makes me a lot more confident when I'm up in front of a room full of people.
We're building better people by encouraging them to get involved and surrounding them with really positive peers and outstanding adult mentors and coaches. Our students that invest their time in athletics and activities have higher GPAs, they have better attendance rates, they have a better mindset and attitude about school, they're leaders of our school culture, and that's where the value lies in a strong athletics and activities program.
I'm Abe Decker, I'm involved in basketball, volleyball, and student senate, and I am a Saber.
My name is Angie Cartezi, and I'm involved in forensics, voices of FHS, tennis, and the Saber Roar, and I am a Saber.
I'm Grant Heminger.
My name is Ramina Wan.
My name is Zach Martins.
I'm Jody Kleba.
I'm Katie Lehman.
I am Soha Malin.
My name is Kate Dolman, and I'm involved in varsity bowling, marching band, Athletics and Activities Council, NHS, Eco Club.
Tennis and soccer, and I'm involved in National Honor Society, Athletics and Activities Council, Student Senate.
Football, basketball, I'm a member of Model UN and the Political Science Club.
Forensics, multicultural club, Model UN.
Student senate, National Honor Society.
Multicultural club, I'm at NHS, forensics, orchestra, a cappella choir.
And I am a Saber.
I am a Saber.
I am a Saber.
And I am a Saber.
So all those students were, are members of our Athletics and Activities Council, and most of them are actually probably at practice right now or they're preparing for our prom preview event, which is being hosted at the high school tonight. So instead of bringing them here to kind of share that message, we're going to use this video and others like this to try to help connect with our middle school students, any other students that would be interested in joining Franklin High School Clubs and Activities or Athletics, and really trying to build, you know, trying to share that why. And all of them are very genuine in terms of what they see as the value of being so heavily involved. And it is, it's stressful, it's time-consuming, they have to make really challenging decisions about their friend groups and what they commit their time to, but they're continuing to accelerate their personal growth and their personal development because of those choices and who we can surround those students with in terms of our coaches and mentors. So we're very proud of that, and that's work that we'll continue to move forward. So to kind of recap, based on our conversations with our improvement team and things that I've noticed in year one, some of our strengths, we have a strong tradition of success, we have very supportive parents, we have a great coaching staff and mentors and advisors. They have very positive philosophies, and they're very willing and able to go the extra mile to try to get more kids plugged into our activities. Students are great recruiters, and they actively market their activities. They help kind of develop the community within their club, activity, or sport that we're really trying to mimic within classrooms and things like that. So, you know, there is, there's no turning away, it's welcome aboard and here's how we can get you involved. We have excellent music practice and performance facilities, that's one thing that we're very proud of. Obviously with the Saber Center and that entire wing of the building, that has helped to really encourage students to kind of step out of their comfort zone a bit, get involved in our choir and music activities, and it's been phenomenal in that regard. Some areas for growth that we've identified, one of our biggest challenges and ongoing challenges would be our practice times, facility condition restraints. That's a barrier for us in terms of our gym space and trying to schedule and program. Right now we have six spring sport teams that are trying to practice in one gym, and we're waiting for that ice to melt, and, you know, they're itching to get outside, but it's, you know, it's very difficult to, to try to coordinate that, and I have to give a ton of credit to our coaches to make, to, you know, making the most out of that. Same thing with our FIAD staff as well, making, you know, making do with, with the space that we have and making the most of that. Areas for growth, number two would be synergy of parent and community groups, continuing to build bridges so that, you know, we have, as we have more students get involved in those 2+, that we try to get those parents involved and try to break down some of the silos that we might see if, you know, if it's a music parent versus a sport parent. We have so many students that are involved in both and trying to build bridges between those so we can have, you know, get a bus full of football players to travel to a band concert, things like that where our students can really show those, that support. Like I said before, we're really striving for equitable participation in activities. That would be clubs, activities, other things like that, there's some room for growth there. And then synergy in our department and school training and well-being philosophy. So working with our FIAD teachers, working with our school nurse, even to the point of like looking at, you know, our lunch, what we serve students at lunch, and really trying to build some synergy around, you know, the message that we're sending related to student well-being from our coaches, advisors, and school staff members so we can help extend the classroom and, and reach students in that regard. So that's what I have. I will, I would love to open it up for questions that you may have relating to athletics and activities happenings at the high school.
Mr. Heine? Thank you for coming.
Yeah, absolutely.
I do want to, I was going to ask you, I appreciated your report, but I was going to ask you to touch a little bit on the successes of activities that were not in your report, it was mostly athletics, but after watching your video, I think some of the students did touch on those successes, although you might want to do it a little bit, but.
Yeah.
I want to say, every time I see one of your videos, which are very well-done.
Thank you.
They just make me proud.
Oh.
And especially this one.
Yeah.
This was very well-done, and you could tell the students are very proud of what they're doing.
Yeah, they all appreciate that. They, and they are very proud as well, and I think if you, if you get a moment to, anytime you're at an event to ask what's your, you know, what's your reason why, it's something that we talk about a lot. You're not going to hear, you know, it's for the championships, or it's for this or for that, you're going to hear answers like that, and you're going to hear, you know, because I, I love the team or feeling part of something bigger than myself, and, so yeah, that's definitely a point of pride for our kids too.
But if you could just touch on a few of the, if you have them.
Yep.
In your mind, some of the successes of the activities.
Right, yeah, and many of our, so many of our activities, as I look at our competitive activities, so forensics, for example, is a group that continues to grow, we're continuing to grow in numbers, and we will have 25 members of that team qualifying for the state tournament in the beginning of April. And we've had, I think, three tournaments this year where we finished in first or second place. We've had a student that finished in the top three in three different, three different divisions of forensics. So that's been definitely a positive result within that group. We have our spring musical coming up once we return from spring break, and that will be a fantastic show. It's probably not a well-known musical, but watching some of the rehearsal and the comedic timing of our kids, it's going to be phenomenal. So if you want to see student talent in terms of being musicians and performers on full display, definitely check that out. And then we have, we have other groups that are moving into competition season, so like Saber Robotics. We have Best Buddies, which is our inclusive group, and they're continuing to grow in numbers and find new ways to bridge, build bridges with other districts. And so those are some of the other successes that we're seeing within activities.
Thank you.
And I guess, how do you, how would I know, as a community member, how would I, you know, you highlighted everything, but not, where do I get my information? Where can I?
I would say, our website will have our most up-to-date schedules. And that changes, in terms of athletics, that changes based on the weather. So if you're looking for, you know, what's an upcoming event?
Standings or?
I'm sorry, excuse me?
Like standings of the season or?
Yeah, that would all be available on our, our conference contracts with a program called Our School, where they, everything is housed in there. In terms of activities, we have an activities calendar that's located on our website as well, that'll give you kind of an update of practices during the week, but then also competitions, mostly on the weekends for those.
And you mentioned your videos, are they, I mean, in the past we'd get like a weekly.
The Saber Pride newsletter?
Yeah, is that still coming out?
Yeah, we, so looking at, one of the things that we've, we've tried to look at and change this year is how we're engaging with social media and how we're sharing results in real time as opposed to at the end of the, at the end of the week. So that's something that, as we move forward, it's definitely a target for us to work with student interns next year and work with like our marketing class to kind of devise, and also with our, the Saber Slate, which is our school digital newspaper, on how we can involve students in that process of what are we sharing? When are we sharing it? Right now it's been kind of as it happens with social media and things like that.
I've seen Facebook posts, I think.
Uh huh, yeah.
And the Saber Slate's online somewhere?
Saberslate.org, yep, is a, our school newspaper.
I've heard of it, but I'm not quite sure, okay, I'll look for it.
The video was well-done though. I mean, I think, I would call it a recruiting tool or whatever, but as a father that had two girls go through school pretty recently that were involved in a ton of activities, I completely echo your position that the more they get involved, the, a lot of times you'll find the more that they do excel.
Uh huh.
And just a more rounded experience in high school.
Yeah.
It led to, leads to a well-rounded person, so.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Any other comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item 8B is the Franklin High School presentation. Mr. Bowles?
Good evening, everybody.
Hi.
We're going to have a few other guests join us today. Last year, you may recall, we did this board presentation, we had students come in, and they shared if they're a part of an internship or a capstone. They were almost, well, they were juniors and seniors, and they brought in kind of artifacts to tell their story, right? Remember, we had the student come directly from dance, and here she brought the thing that she had made as, you know, a member of our sort of intern using our Exceler Lab space. This year, I've asked some students and staff from our Inroads program to come in and highlight what their work is, because what they emphasize and what they're demonstrating not only is innovation something that we value, but it also is like painting pictures of what high school can be. So we have students learning how they learn, learning themselves, engaging in interdisciplinary work that connects in skills and habits beyond, okay, just the immediate academic class, working with adults very richly to provide evidence of their growth as individuals as well as, you know, show success in academic core areas. So their story is going to be based on where they are as a freshman, sophomore, junior, or senior, but I really want to let them tell it. So Ms. Dylasis, Ms. Upworth, and students, if they can kind of come on up, and then I'll slide to the side and, you know, let those kind of, again.
Okay. Hello, everybody, we will do some brief introductions, but really we wanted to do two things. One, I think the last time we presented to the board about Inroads was probably a while back, so maybe bits and pieces here and there, but really quickly ground everyone in changes that have occurred since maybe that last happened, because we are constantly including and changing things each year. And then also, really, after we gave you that quick overview, we want the majority of the time to be the students sharing their experience. So we've kind of set things up so we can go through grade by grade. We'll start with the ninth grade, then tenth, and work all the way up to 12. Our 12th grade student wasn't able to be here tonight, but we have a video of her as well, so we can watch that when we get there. And at the end, we can, we'd be happy to answer any questions. So, without further ado, well, oh wait, I forgot introductions, and it's Dylasis. I'm the, technically the personalized learning system specialist and also the Inroads program coordinator.
Oh, I'm Claire, I'm in 10th grade, and I'm part of the Inroads program.
I'm Ryan, I'm in 9th grade, and I'm also part of the Inroads program.
I'm Sad, I'm in 11th grade.
And I'm Katherine Hepburn, I am the English teacher for 9th and 10th grade.
And I'm Katherine Hefford. I am the English teacher for ninth and 10th grade.
Okay. Who's he? Okay, so this is technically our fifth year of Inroads, and about two years ago, we took some time to re-ground and really establish our vision and mission for the program. So our vision, as you can see, is igniting a love of learning that fosters confident, competent, flexible individuals ready to lead in an evolving world. And this really comes out of some ideas that are out there at the moment, that we don't quite know what the future of work and learning and things like that is going to look like. So we want to make sure that our students are future-ready and also ready to lead in that capacity. And in order to do that, we want to make sure that they know what they're excited about and know themselves as learners. So our mission, then, is to create a supportive, challenging environment where students immerse themselves in experiential learning in order to leave school ready to lead and confident in their person, skill, and path. So in order to do that, we have established some programmatic outcomes. I'm going to let you just take a second and read these. They're a little dense, but it kind of covers a lot of stuff. So we're trying to capture four years of programming in two bullets. So what we really hope that we can unpack tonight is, great, these are words on a page, but what does that feel like for a student, and how does that, how do they experience that? And how is that helping them in order to reach our program's vision and mission? So what we've done is framed it around different yearly outcomes. Each year has a theme, and we will kind of preview that when we go right in front of each grade level student as they speak. We've also framed a lot of our work around the Wisconsin Leadership Skills Certificate, so every enrolled student has the ability to earn that certificate, and we do a lot of direct teaching of those skills and opportunities for learning and getting feedback around those as well. So those are framed within each year as well, certain skills out of the 14. And then finally, you'll see that each year, we offer certain experiences. We kind of have a minimum guarantee of what students will have, and then we hope to always go above and beyond that as well. I'll explain the teacher experience from my perspective. There are two parts, the structure and collaboration. For the structure, I'm the teacher who's in the room first, second, and third block, so I see the students all day. So I see ninth graders on A days and 10th graders on B days. And then I have two co-teachers who are in the room for sure, all three of us are in there for one hour, and then the other two hours, it's just two of us. The other part is the collaboration. I'm the English teacher. Jess Taylor is the history teacher for both ninth and 10th. And then Jessica Nielsen is the seminar teacher for freshmen, and Benny Movitz is the seminar teacher for sophomores. So we all have different content area specialties that we bring to the table, and through that, we are able to facilitate our daily activities, and that allows us to be really flexible in how we schedule our time with the students. For example, sometimes we go, first hour is history, second hour is English, third hour is leadership. However, now we're at the point of the year where everything just kind of blends together, and we might spend an entire day working on leadership portfolio reflections and developing that aspect, and then the next day, we might completely focus on something English-related. So we get to a point in the year where the students are just ready to roll with whatever daily schedule we have for them, and that has just really been beneficial from a teacher perspective, because I, as the English teacher, get to see how my daily skills of communicating effectively in writing and speaking can be infused in both history and these other student-led and student-developed projects. But then the other flip side of that is that I have a history teacher, and science teacher, and Spanish teacher who support me in making sure that the students have properly formatted works cited pages, which makes my English teacher heart happy. So the fact that I have teachers who have different content supporting English skills and vice versa, it creates a really positive environment for all of the students. Ninth grade, our theme is inquire. You can see we have essential questions. Our leadership skills are all specifically chosen to help ninth graders transition to the high school, and then we have our minimum guarantees for experiential learning. And then Ryan O'Leary is our ninth grader. We'll speak about his experience so far this year.
Okay, so I went into, I learned about Inroads in May, or May of 2018, and I was told at teacher conferences that I would, that she'd recommend me because she thought it would be a good fit for me. And as I got into the program, I noticed a lot of differences between Inroads classes and non-Inroads classes. And one of the big differences that I think is very, like, I prefer it for my learning style, is that it's a very project-based class, and we can see that in all three of the different topics that we cover throughout our day. For example, we've done projects that, for world history, that we call the superhero poster. We've also done a historical context poster in English, where we could present the information that we had to present in any format. And also, for seminar, we do something called a curiosity program, where we focus on what we're curious about, and we can research anything. So overall, it's just a much more flexible way for me to learn, and we can focus on things that we're struggling with more, and less on stuff that we are already good at, and stuff that we already have down. Leadership skills are also an important difference in the program. It's very based on learning from your mistakes and progression. So our grade is based on the progression we make in the program, and not just one specific quiz or test that we take. There's also a huge focus on real-life applications in all three classes, and we're consistently asked, how can we apply these skills to our future, including our future college and our future careers? Teachers also challenge us a lot. We have a higher curriculum than the average freshman class, and they give us projects with a very wide scope. We can, or, I'm sorry, we can, like speeches, for example. We are given speeches where we present information that we researched, and they're pushing us to, to the mentality that we can learn to do anything great. For example, our curiosity projects, we had to present for speeches, and at the beginning of the year, many of our classmates, including me, were very uncomfortable going up in front of a group of people and speaking, and we have just, in general, gotten a lot better at that. We also have good, new experiences that none of us would probably try if we would not have joined Inroads. For example, we recently toured UW Milwaukee, and I had not thought of UW Milwaukee as a school that I would want to attend, but after touring it and after seeing it, I think it's a great school, and that is one of my top college choices now. Another experience that we get to experience, like I said before, is curiosity projects, and they allow us to explore our interests, and they help us apply our leadership skills to real life, because rather than just doing a regular project with a topic assigned, we're allowed to research anything that we want, and so if we go into a career we want, obviously, it's going to have better real-life implications. Also, community service is a huge part of Inroads. Inroads requires us to serve our community by volunteering, and our second curiosity project is based on helping out our community or raising awareness about an issue. And overall, Inroads has just been a great program for me, and it has allowed me to explore my interests. It's obviously greatly improved my ability to present in front of a group of people, and it has better set me up for my future, my future career, my future college, and has an emphasis on learning from mistakes and trying new things.
Next, at the 10th grade level, our theme is serve, and the essential questions are more geared toward that big idea. And then our leadership skills are more focused on collaboration. So once the ninth graders become proficient at who am I as a learner, and how do I take responsibility for my actions, the next step logically is, how do I take those skills and apply them to a group setting? And at this time, Claire will speak about her experiences at the 10th grade level.
Since this year's theme was to serve, we were tasked to find a problem in our community that we could help try to make an impact on. And so I was working with a group of girls, and we all found that teens at Franklin High School are not getting sufficient amounts of sleep. And so our goal was to find a way to, like, how can we make sure kids are being more healthy and, you know, because it can have a better impact on our students academically? And so we were, after diving into researching and becoming really good experts on this, we even wrote a book, Why We Sleep, and we were able to gain a whole bunch of information that we thought we would be able to share with our community. And so we put together our own panel. Some of the members of the panel are here today, but they were able to hear our project, and I feel like Inroads this year has really helped me grow in my leadership skills, because I've been able, because I've been able to, like, present in front of a bunch of people and take initiative in order to just try to make a change in my community. I've really enjoyed Inroads this year, and I'm looking forward to what has to come.
Okay, so 11th grade is a time that I think most students get really excited for, because they get to go out in their job shadows and be of the community. We guarantee these three job shadows per student that Rachel Fredericks, our community experience coordinator, helps to set up for us. So that's part of that experience. So they're working on this idea of how am I preparing myself for professional success, and how am I marketing myself as an individual? And then you see the three leadership skills that show up a little bit deeper, focused on the critical thinking and problem-solving, ethical behavior, and then seeking out additional opportunities to be trained. So Sad is going to tell us about his 11th grade experience.
All right, so just before jumping to the slides, I'm focusing to go into the medical field. So a lot of my things I did this year are around, focused around the medical area. So jump me right in, job shadows. This was probably the highlight of this year, and this is probably the biggest thing we did. So on the top left, that's where I went to GE Healthcare. I job shadowed a biomedical engineer, and I learned a lot about what they do, what they make. Before going in, I was a little confused about what their job was. So I learned that they make MRI scans, CT scans, x-rays, prosthetics. So this helped me understand what a biomedical engineer actually does. The other job shadow I went, top right, was the Ascension Cancer Care Center. I job shadowed an oncologist, and this was really fun. I learned what, how oncologists work with their patients. I saw how chemo was done, how radiation was done, and also saw, when I was going into this job shadow, I really wanted to know how doctors and patients work with each other, and it was almost like a friendship bond, which was really surprising to me, and I really loved that experience. Moving on, we did college essays and resume. So that's my resume at the bottom. This was, we worked from day one of 11th grade this year till the end, and we, we put a lot of time and effort in this. We, I have my classes, my job experiences, class info. When I started applying for colleges, I may, or I might, probably will, put this on my application, because we put a lot of time and effort, and this is really, like, a lot, every junior puts so much time and effort into this. Also, we wrote college essays. This was, our teacher gave us different prompts a college may ask us when we were applying for colleges. Throughout the semester, we started revising, writing these essays, and this also gave me a lot of experience and knowledge of, when I start applying for college, I'll know how to write a college essay when they give me a prompt. Next, we had to earn a certification during Inroads, and to the bottom right, that's my certification. I certified in the OSHA healthcare, 10-hour healthcare course, and this was really long, a little boring, but it was really helpful, because I learned what not to do and what to do in the healthcare environment, so like labs, what a doctor should and shouldn't do. Yeah. Also, for the final of this whole course, we did mock interviews. So we applied for a job that we wanted to do. I picked an oncologist at Stevens Point Hospital, and we got interviewed by actual community members, so my, I got interviewed by a nurse. And this helped me a lot. I think this was one of the most helpful things that I've done this year, because I've learned what an interview, what questions they might ask me, what they want, because whenever I get interviewed, let's say in the future in this, about like an oncologist, I'll know what I need to say, what I want. Inroads this year was probably the most fun, because I got to go on job interviews, except that OSHA, that was something. But I think Inroads has helped me, like, focus on a career path I really wanted. Coming into high school, I wanted to be engineer, but I was, I wasn't really interested in it, so I, Inroads really helped me choose different classes that may interest me, and science really interested me. So I started focusing down the medical route, and yeah, thank you.
And finally, our 12th grade, the focus is lead. This is where things start to, well, things start to shift a little bit in terms of 11th grade, in terms of courses that students have to take. They only have to take one semester field study experience in, or field study course in junior year, and then senior year, they are simultaneously enrolled in a capstone course, and then also have their choice of field experience. So they might be in an internship, either in the community or at school. They may be in a youth apprenticeship, or they could have extended job shadow or service learning, though no one has yet taken us up on that option. Still stands as an option. So without further ado, we will watch Shreya's video. This is not my full-time job. I have other strengths. Do I have it in the wrong? You know what, we can just play it, and then I'll put the microphone up a little bit, because I can hear him. Apart from insightful job shadows and interview preparation, is the senior year internships. The variety of internships given by the program are excellent. I don't know. We also could just send it to you if this doesn't work. Okay, let's not force it. Okay. So I'm sure that Shreya would tell us that she's enjoyed her senior year. Do you actually, do you want to speak to some of the things she's done senior year?
She hasn't told me all of this.
Okay, that's okay.
I do, so Shreya is one of my captains on the forensics team, and I've known her since she was a freshman at the high school, and I do notice from speaking with her on a daily basis, that she has enjoyed the leadership focus, the capstone course. I know she's in the research course, and she says that is a very challenging course. It makes her think critically, which she enjoys, and...
I think overall, the other thing that is important about senior year is that students have that chance to dive in and have those authentic experiences, and what we hope is that in these first three years, they're prepared to go and do that to the best of their ability, and really feel like a functional member out in the community. And I think that we'll continue to work on the connections too, like, we can keep making stronger connections between the capstones and the internship experiences as well. So. The three students that spoke tonight are just a snapshot of our program, and these are our
are our experiences of the 2018-19 school year by the numbers. So, we have a lot of worksite visits and lots of job shadows, YA internship placements. As speakers, we try to cover a wide range of opportunities for them.
Okay. So, in closing, a couple of thank yous. First, to the school board and Dr. Miller, thank you for valuing innovative programming and understanding that flexibility and time are important resources. To our administrators, Mr. Bolo and Mr. Cohen in particular, who's been instrumental in instigating and sustaining this program. Thank you for, thank you for creating a safe space for staff to take risks, to fail forward and to challenge the status quo. To our students and our families who are here in support of them, thank you for taking a risk on something new and believing in the value of providing ongoing feedback for us in how to improve. And this last one, I think, is really big. I know that currently we have five active inroads designated staff members in addition to all the other support that we get from additional staff. But over the five years of this program, there have been 40 staff members involved. And I think that it really speaks to the fact that this is hard work, that they have taken, that pushes people out of their comfort zones and demands time beyond the current structures that we have in place. So, I think that none of this would happen if it weren't for the effort that people have put in. They've worked collaboratively, learned from risks that they've taken and the discomfort that they've often felt and have failed forward to create a new opportunity for students. And we hope to keep sustaining and improving that. That's it. Thank you.
How many students are, how many students are involved?
Currently?
Yeah.
I think I have that number memorized. I would say probably 120 right now.
Oh, really?
And how is math woven into the program? I know you mentioned history and science and social studies, but how is math woven in?
Currently humanities, the English and history are the only subject areas that are co-taught that are interdisciplinary. We try to support the students as best we can in terms of their curiosity projects if they go up like a math and science route. But we specifically, at least at the ninth and 10th year level, I am not qualified to teach math or science to anyone.
So, they take math as a different class? Because your program is half a day, isn't it right? And then the other, or...
Half of their schedule.
Half their schedule and then they can do math and science and more traditional classes. Is that right? Yeah. Okay.
Ryan, Claire, and Saad, thank you for coming tonight. I think you did a fantastic job and I, I just think, yeah. I'm really happy that inroads is working for you and I think you're really going to be successful in your futures. Claire, you're a very persistent student. I was at her presentation on sleep study and she's, she's very good in her presentation. And Ryan, you spoke very well tonight, so inroads really worked for you tonight, did well tonight. Yeah, OSHA. What can we say?
I agree with you. It's boring, but it's kind of important sometimes. Well, I think it's working as designed too. I mean, we've heard when the program got started, this is the time in your life that you want to try some things. And if it doesn't work out or you find that you're not doing what you want to do, third year in college is not the time to change it if you go on to college. So, that's great that you thought you'd come in with one idea and turned out that maybe that really didn't interest you and so, that's good.
Do you know how long the inroads program has been around? Because I remember back in the early 80s, being involved in inroads with the Milwaukee Public Schools.
I don't know. I, you know what?
Yeah, I don't know either. I'm just kind of curious.
That was not this. So, this is...
Yes, I know. You probably weren't born, but I don't...
No, I was born in that. I just didn't like that. I was still in Michigan in elementary school.
Thanks for rubbing it in.
It's okay. Just ask for it. It's okay. Yeah, we, we're in our fifth year.
Okay.
So, we just had our first class of graduates last spring. Our second is coming up soon. Yeah. But I, I mean, I think everyone in the areas has, not everyone, but a lot of people in the area, a lot of districts in the area have their own take on things and are kind of approaching the work in a different way. And so, this is how we've chosen to approach it. Some people have a full-on charter school happening and we're doing something that's more embedded within the rest of the students' day. So, instead of being in one thing entirely, they still have the flexibility of being in the other programs.
I think it was more like a job shadowing thing when it first started.
You'd have to ask Mr. Cohen about the name. He's got the history on it.
Collaborative effort, but we made it up.
I also just wanted to say too, that's something we've shifted throughout time. I think initially when inroads started, there were only three strands available to students and we've noticed that pigeonhole kids and that they especially feel like when they go out of their job shadows, they have that reflective piece of like, oh, yeah, no, no, I'm not going to do that. Or yes, this is awesome. And so, we have worked to open it up. So, kids, when they sign up in a grade, they do have to say something that they're interested in, but no one's making them stick with that. They are offered the opportunity to explore it more deeply and what that means. And that's kind of where the curiosity projects that Ryan talked about come in and also that initial college and career research in the freshman year in order to start that happening. And then that kind of continues as a thread throughout. But we work with them too. They have, we didn't really talk about the mentorship aspect, but that's a piece too that the seminar teachers do. They meet with the kids, they do goal setting around the leadership skills. They have those reflections after they do site visits and college visits. So, they're actively reflecting about like, is this a fit for me? Is it not? What are the features of that workplace that I like? Even if it's not, like I don't want to be an engineer. It's like, well, what kind of environment is that? What do I want to be in? So, we just keep trying to refine those elements to deepen it and make it more applicable to help them work through.
Yeah, yeah, good.
Thank you all very much. It's very nice.
Thank you.
All right. The next item on agenda is 8C, the Franklin High School Space Needs Concept Drawings. Mr. Milzer?
Tonight, we have with us Nick Kent and Devin Cack from Plunkett Raisitch Architects. They both worked on our middle school design. And in January, when we looked at the list of facility projects for the future, there were three items in there that we had prices on based on conceptual drawings at the high school for additions. And I said we would be back to show you the drawings that went with that and that's, that's what we're doing tonight. The plans were developed to plan for the renovations that we knew about in the locker rooms and so forth, and then to look at the open land we had and the needs we still have in student programs. And how would we use that space and what would that look like to make sure that we have enough space and we're doing the right things with it as we expand at the high school whenever that happens? So, the team that worked on it were our architects, high school FIAID teachers, coaches, administration, as well as buildings and grounds, athletics and myself. And I'll turn it over to Nick Kent.
Okay. Well, thanks. It's great to be back. It's exciting that there's actually a building standing across the street now. We're not talking about drawings like this for the middle school. So, it's very exciting for us to see that take shape as I hope you all are excited as well to see that come to fruition. So, tonight, we do want to share with you the conceptual drawings, as Jim mentioned, that we developed last year for things that could be at the high school at some point in the future. And really, I'm going to turn it over to Devin, who really did a lot of the legwork on our end to put this together.
Yeah, thanks again for having us. My name is Devin Cack and Jordan's now helping me. We're already collaborating together. I felt it was important that I at least shake his hand because I haven't met Jordan yet. When we were going through this process, that was with Sarah in inroads. So, great collaborative effort. And Jim mentioned the number of individuals that were involved over really kind of about six months, kind of on and off, as we were meeting through a series of meetings that took place at the high school. Great kind of iterative process with the staff there, making sure that we can identify and that we can implement as many of those requests that really tried to hit on everything that was presented earlier this evening. The team that went ahead of me made this really easy on me. You know, we need to make sure that we're properly addressing the title line issue that exists. Obviously, that's, that's number one. But then as we're looking at additional potential improvements on the site, making sure that we're aligning, properly aligning practice times for students so that they can continue their success in athletics, but more importantly, in the classroom like they are right now. Also, enabling equitable participation throughout each gender and then also enhancing the overall well-being of our students from a physical and intellectual mindset. So, number one, obviously the title line issue with the existing FIAID locker rooms. But as we look at that, as what Jim was mentioning, we want to make sure that overall, we're considering the entire area of footprint that we're even attempting to address. So, in the di, in the conceptual plan that you're seeing, the site plan, that tan area, that's the existing building. Here's your, your front approach and then the main entrance here, Saber Center to orient everybody is over here, the existing pool. This is really kind of the, the only kind of really truly buildable piece of property left adjacent to the high school. We're bordered in by parking, all the wetland requirements, the plantings, the athletic fields and whatnot. So, as we look at the potential, we want to make sure that we're maximizing this space. Again, meeting with those individuals to collaborate and making sure that we're getting those requests and the different programmatic needs within. I'll kind of jump into the, the first floor plan. So, going from the site plan now to the conceptual first floor plan. So, just to orient everybody again, here's the current competition gym. This is the existing pool. And all of the, the red area is the potential for a building addition on the existing site. So, kind of step one was making sure that we're addressing title nine. So, the existing FIAID locker rooms on the east and the west side of the existing gym space, we would build an addition out here adjacent to the existing building and housing upwards of 800 lockers for both boys and girls equitable. At that same time, providing additional athletic and building storage. So, we're making sure that we're taking care of our equipment that we already have and maintain it for the long term. Going back in and looking at what's happened, what happens to the existing FIAID locker rooms, turning those over to the athletic needs as we're thinking about even the need for the, to alleviate the title nine, just with the, the additional growth that has occurred since these original locker rooms were built. So, creating true athletic locker rooms with some, some coaches space, proper meeting rooms, should we have a girls' team coached by a male coach or vice versa for the boys, as well as providing a visitor locker room. So, we always truly have a home field advantage, right? We can paint that all pink and, right? Sorry for the caveat. As, as we look into, deeper into what we're looking at in kind of that first phase, we also want to look at the existing pool locker rooms. Those haven't been addressed in a number of years and we want to make sure that we're attending to them properly. So, renovating those spaces and then also creating a family locker room. So, you're seeing the idea of a family locker room as we maintain that equitable share for the boys and girls, creating a family locker room. So, the littlest learners that are in the community coming for swimming lessons have an appropriate place to be with their family as they're coming for an open swim or for different swim lessons. All right. The, the next kind of step was looking at the, the rest of the site. So, we've, we've kind of put on the FIAID locker rooms, but here we're only looking at the first floor. So, the existing building is obviously two stories down at this end of the building. So, wanting to maximize that area. So, if we would jump upstairs, I won't just to keep everybody organized, creating a, a large flexible practice area for, for students. Multi-purpose in function, so it can help all of those teams in different capacities. Next, looking at this large animal that you guys have all been staring at, the four, a potential for a four-station fieldhouse. What we're showing here is competition court in the middle. Again, one, two, three, and then four courts. So, allowing proper practice times for students to make sure that we're thinking about the academic needs at the same time. A lot of seating, so for graduations, also for various athletic and performance events that could happen in this space. And then you're seeing the, the striping here for a potential track within that space. Now, what goes along with a four-station fieldhouse? There's the potential for a, a lot of participants coming from other schools, from within the school, as well as for graduation. So, we have to make sure that we're accommodating their needs as well. Putting in the proper amount of public restrooms, making sure that we have entry where we can compartmentalize kind of this end of the building and not allowing people back into the entire facility. Creating concessions area as well as ticket booths and a proper egress and ingress from the building and, and out as code would dictate. I also don't care for OSHA. If anybody's getting bored, just raise their hand, as I would if I was sitting in a Saad's seat that day, so. Additional team locker rooms pop on to the, to the west side of the building here, as well as team meeting rooms for visitors, as well as other athletic events happening down at the stadium. We're seeing the idea of where a long jump pit could occur, as well as additional exterior building storage. Okay, got it back. Along with this first, first floor improvements, we'll, we'll jump upstairs and again, I'll orient everybody. Again, the red is proposed addition. This is the existing competition court. Here's the existing pool. The area from about here over, so this is directly above the FIAID locker rooms, that's the large practice space, multi-purpose space that would be brought on. So, along with, with that practice space, when the potential for the fieldhouse would come on, we get another large practice space that could occur in this area. And then also kind of backfilling and doing some renovation within the existing footprint, where we're looking at the expanded weight room, as well as overall long-term well-being within that space. So, again, we're touching the mind and the body. Within there is also a ability to create a second floor viewing deck for parents and visitors, keeping them separate, but having great line of sight of their students, their participants, their sons or daughters in the events that are taking place in the pool down below. As part of then moving to kind of a phase three, how we've been looking at this, that would be renovating the pool space, as well as adding on a viewing deck to expand the teams that are able to be right there on the, the deck with their teammates. As part of doing that, you're seeing that, that addition right here, we're also looking at reconfiguring or renovating the existing diving wells and creating an additional toolings that could also hold diving. So, expanding the, the ability not only for student athletes, but also for the community to use a larger, more flexible pool. If there's any questions?
Could you please read the legend next to the colors there?
Zoom in on that.
Sure. And again, these are, these are construct, conceptual, oh, sorry.
Color blocks.
Oh, oh, the, left, sorry. Inroads would be good for me, right? So, again, the, the red is potential for new construction. And then we've broken it down, just from a cost standpoint, it's appropriate to look at a heavy renovation in that more bold color and a lighter renovation in the lighter tan color. So, you can see that reconfiguration. So, you can see that reconfiguration that needs to occur within the existing FIAD locker rooms for the boys and the girls. And then, you're seeing the level of involvement that would be needed for the family locker room. That includes reconfiguring the existing boys, and then also the level of renovation that would be required to expand the pool, creating those two additional lanes.
So, basically, Devin, in a nutshell, we can break this into three distinct projects, correct?
Yes.
So, how many locker rooms existing now, and then how many after you're done, excluding the fieldhouse?
So, oh, wow, existing now. I don't have the numbers in front of me of the existing now, I apologize. But for future, we're looking at, right now, the configuration shows 798. I'll say approximately 798. That's the number that we're identifying right now. So, looking to be able to house the student population as it continues to move into the future.
And what happens to existing? That's...
So, then, in the existing, we're locating athletic team locker rooms. So, within, in there, right now, we've got about 160 lockers. Students are being more and more involved in the programs that you're seeing, where some of them even kind of have an athletic locker throughout the whole year, just as they're in sports continuously, which we've heard that too sport is a threshold for additional academic success. So, trying to maximize the footprint of what's there.
So, how much does this touch my wallet? Can I ask that?
I wouldn't, I think I'd let Jim address that.
You're touching a lot of space, I just wanted to know.
Right. On the projections, we had projected this entire project to be about 36 million. And we're looking at it now as being three different pieces. It could possibly be more. We could divide it up a little bit more. But the two things that need to go together are the new FIAD locker rooms and redoing the athletic locker rooms. Since the existing locker rooms are redone for athletics, they don't really work for FIAD at that point. There's different kinds of lockers, there's a different number of lockers. And at this point, with a school over 1,500 students, this area of our school is really way behind. We don't have enough facilities. These facilities were built right from the beginning in 1961, I think. And we're not made for all of the additions we've done to the school and the number of students participating, and that fantastic number of how many boys and girls are participating. When we see the GPA and the great things that it's doing, it's really great. And on the other hand, they're dealing with some facilities that aren't real great, and they're in the elementary schools practicing, so that when they, some of them, when they come to this court to play their home games, it's not really their home field. They're used to being at one of the elementaries. We just don't have enough space, and when that happens, we push them out into the other schools, and some of the younger kids get pushed out from the events that they'd like to have at those schools during the week. So, this is all needed space. It would be great to have it immediately, but we're really planning for the future, so that when the time comes, we're pretty close with the ideas on what's needed. When we get to the point of adding any of these, we definitely have to sit down and look at it more closely and put the planning in behind it to make this happen. But based on the input from all of the folks that were on the planning team, this was a good plan for the future.
What's Phase One look like again?
So, Phase One would be, basically, if you take a line right where the pointer is here, and to the right, doing this kind of, so we build the FIAD locker rooms first, and then kind of backfill, renovate those existing spaces.
Is that two-story?
The addition is two stories, correct? So, then, that would provide some immediate, when this was to be constructed, additional practice space to pull some of those students out. That potentially could also, you know, like Jim said, could potentially be broken into multiple phases if it was needed.
And what was Phase One projected cost?
I think it was about 9.7 million.
So, and as, still in keeping with Phase One would also be, so it's that addition, the backfill on the two existing FIAD locker rooms, and then it's addressing the current state of the pool locker rooms and creating that family locker room.
Is the fieldhouse like the minimum, or can it be something smaller? Or is it...
It can always, it can always be something different.
How did you decide on four? Because it's...
So, at this point, in our state, I'll say in our state, Division One high schools, even Division Two high schools, this has kind of become almost a standard-sized gym. Some high schools now that aren't as big as Franklin are starting to creep into five-station gyms. And a lot of it is driven by what you heard earlier, the increase in student activities, the demand for practice time, practice space, and even community access to these spaces. So, this is not an unusual-sized gym for a high school of this enrollment.
So, this then kind of maxes out the overall capacity of this high school then, correct? We're not, because, you know, you're putting on a super gym, and how much girl potential is on the rest, is potential in the rest of the building?
What's due east of the current building?
A hill and woods.
Yeah.
No, I mean, just due east of the building right there, that's just blank.
Aren't there multiple fields also?
Yeah, up on the top there, that's all woods, yeah, and there's two fields. On the space, this is the last open usable land that we're not already using. If you had to push the road out of the way, get rid of the football field, you could build there probably a bit. There is the possibility, we've talked about, that if you get creative, you could create another story on the building by essentially building a building over the top of it to hold that, if we had to. But the classrooms are sized such that there's enough space for the projected build-out of Franklin with high school students. And if we would go beyond that, then we'd have to look at other ways to do it, like those, or possibly that inner courtyard there. But most of the site, by the new rules, is wetlands or set aside, or trees that can't be cut down, unless we ask for a special exception with the city.
And the parking is adequate for a super gym?
Yeah, you know, when it comes to these things, you can probably never have enough parking, but if you think about it, the events are already, a lot of them are already happening here at the building. You are sized with your last parking expansion with the Saber Center, you are sized for a large gathering space already on the site. Now, do you have a musical performance at the same time as a big basketball game, at the same time as practice on the other fields? Is it going to get tight? Probably. But it's kind of that old analogy, you don't, you don't always build the church for Easter Sunday either. Most of the time, it's not going to be functioning at that capacity. And one of the challenges on any site, the more building you build, the more parking you add, the more hard surface you add, the more stormwater management that we have to add to the site. And that will take up more site space as well. So, you will push the limits of the site.
So, obviously, your next step is the lockers, correct? I mean, so what is your next step coming to the board for anything?
You mean, the first piece of this that we'd have would be the locker rooms? Yeah.
And you said you anticipate that coming to the board next, in the summer, you said?
I think, I think based on our current budget and what's happening with the middle school expansion and adding 4K, I don't think we'd have the funding to do both of those pieces out of our budget. It would probably take a few years to get there. So, in examining that, we're looking at what would the cost be of doing new lockers with the thought of relocating them at the time we would do these, so that we don't have any throwaways, but fixing up those facilities so that they're usable for now, and then continuing to save to do those. Or, I mean, you can always look at a referendum, but we were going to try and save enough to do that.
Were you having any conversations with potential donors who might want to see their name on a fieldhouse?
We're definitely open to donors who'd like to see their name on a field.
You gotta get that word out.
Right.
Even the locker rooms.
So, this was just informational and a concept review, so any other questions? Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Good to see all you.
Nice seeing you at the convention, too.
Yes, absolutely.
Item 8D is the 2019-20 preliminary budget assumption of Mr. Milzer.
Well, we know at this time of year, it's very early for the budget, so these are, we're starting to estimate things to go forward. The first thing is enrollment, and enrollment plays a big factor in our revenue limit calculation. For next year, we're looking at a resident enrollment increase of about 100 students, and it's larger than usual because we're adding 4K, and we'll be getting credit for those students. So, we're adding that in there, and we did have 67 open enrollment seats approved by the board. The CPI for July 1 is 2.44 percent. In state aid and the revenue limit, our equalized value increase was slightly less than the state average, so we would look at getting slightly more in state aid than we would have otherwise received. But the big ticket item is the 1921 biennial budget from the state. That process started with the introduction of the governor's budget. There are many good things in there for public education, increases in funding for special education, for 4K, funding the revenue limit, at least for two years, at a $200 and $204 increase per student, and then indexing it to the CPI, which is something that's particularly helpful, because a great number of our expenditures are linked to the CPI for salaries, and even more usually for insurance increases. So, that would be very helpful in trying to make ends meet. On transportation, we have our consortium that has saved us money in the past. Looking at the future, we're just having trouble getting bus drivers, even for regular routes now. It's getting very tight, so they're, they just increased the amount they're paying for a brand-new bus driver, $18.50 an hour, with a $1,500 sign-on bonus, and of course, paid training. And we're trying to get the word out there so that we can pick up some more bus drivers in Franklin, that we don't have to not only worry about our home-to-school routes, but have plenty of them for our after-school athletics and activities programs that need to be taken different schools as well. Retirees, we have seven teachers retiring, which is about average this year. On 4K, when I wrote this, we were at 173 students, and we're continuing to look at that and adjust the classes as we go through. Probably won't get much more than that until probably August, we think, and then we'll see if any more students come in. Salaries, our wage negotiations will start prior to the end of the fiscal year. And benefits, our health and dental plans are up, so July 1, 2019. So, we're currently waiting to hear on our renewal information to see which direction we're going there. And in fund balance, we'll continue to maintain our fund balance, so that we don't have to borrow money to pay for our expenses. And that's where we're at at this point.
Are you exploring self-insurance, Jim?
We're looking at doing that this fall. We want a long lead time for that, and to do a good job on it, and to match up plans. So, we're looking at, we discussed that we're looking at starting in possibly October for the following year, and look at it top to bottom and get a good idea of what our costs would be and what it would take to switch, and looking at what our plan has and what that would be specifically.
Right.
So, we're definitely looking at that.
Okay.
And I'll make the offer to make an introduction to that M3 agency. They do represent 250 school districts in the state, and they have health insurance consortiums in several areas of the state, as close as Waukesha, for, you know, several school districts forming a consortium for their, you know, health insurance services and things like that. But I do have contacts there that I could help with.
Thanks, and we do, too. We've used them in the past.
Pardon?
We've used them in the past, so we do...
M3? Oh, okay.
I'm sure things may have changed a lot since the company I was with did self-insurance, but it's kind of attractive on the front end, but it's real tricky on the back end, so...
The only thing you really have...
Because you got that open-ended...
It's a reinsurance business, is what it is. It's the reinsurance. You're purchasing reinsurance or stop-loss insurance. And other than that, even with a group of anywhere from 190 to 300 employees, we were able to manage it very easily. With, you know, with the cancers and the tragedies that normally beset industry.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, move on to nine school board liaison reports. 9A, does anyone have a regular liaison report? Okay. 9B, school and community engagement visits, are there any visits? I visited gallery night on February 28th at the Saber Center, first with their awards presentation, where all the schools were represented at the Saber Center. The principals gave out awards to all the students that had artwork on display. And then, after the awards, everyone dispersed to the commons, and then out in the hallway of the Saber Center, and you could look at their artwork, which was very nice. And then, you could go and do some hands-on art activities in the art area, and it was very well-attended. And then, I also participated in Junior Achievement Day at Southwood Glen, and I was invited to teach global marketing to sixth graders, and it was exciting, and I had to do a lot of studying, which I did. Some people didn't have to do a lot of studying with the kindergarten and things like that, but it was a good day. I enjoyed it and would do it again, so it was very nice. Any other activities? All right, thank you. Item 10, I'm looking for a motion to enter in a closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State statute 19.85, sub 1, sub E, to discuss land purchase, and this is an action item. Do I hear that motion?
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Larson, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Lewis. Second by Mr. Lewis, any discussion? Hearing none, can I have a roll call, please, Mr. Nielsen?
Sure, Mrs. Larson?
Aye.
Mr. Lewis?
Aye.
Mr. Gamble?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mrs. Wachowski?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich is excused, and I say yes.
Okay, we are in closed session at 7:29. Does anyone need a short session at 8 o'clock? There was no action taken in closed session, and so now we are on item 11.
Let's say action item, though, does that mean anything?
The action item was returned.
A motion to return to open session.
Oh, okay, oh, I see.
Yeah, so item 11, school board debriefing, are there any comments from the board members?
Yeah, I just want to say, it seems like items are added to the agenda, some of the attachments and reports just kind of appear, they're not all there at the time that the agenda is posted.
Such as?
And they appear, I believe Jim's report, and I also believe the athletic report were added after it was posted. And I'm sure you can check the system to see when they were actually added. There is no automatically generated email to say they were added, so I guess you have to be vigilant, but I was surprised to see.
It's pretty rare that they aren't all there on Friday. It is very rare. In this instance, with the athletic report, we were looking at that and Mr. Milzer and I, our schedules weren't matching up exactly, so it didn't get posted right away Friday. And then Mr. Milzer was taking the time he needed to prepare the documents for the closed session. So, but it is very rare.
The budget item was also added later.
That was there Thursday before it ever went up. I added that Thursday night.
That we got an email about, so I guess what Mrs. Wachowski is asking for is an email.
And I think also, I mean, the gifts, I think, are added later, too. I noticed that last agenda, that I'll sometimes look at the consent agenda and there's a gift. I didn't see that before, so.
Okay.
I'm just saying, it's my experience, so.
I'll monitor it more closely.
Did we used to get emails about changes to the agenda? Because I would see Board docs has available, and then I would see another email that would say, and now you're saying that doesn't happen anymore?
Only if the item is changed, not if there's, the item existed, but then a report was added. That's not, you don't get that.
Maybe they need to add a period to make a change, and then it'll trigger a change.
Well, I thought we did, we got two of them this time. We got one when gifts were added this time, and we got one when Jim added his.
Yes, it is.
I'll keep an eye on it, but to, at least send an email saying it's coming later.
Got it. Okay. Item 12, future agenda items. We have boards' self-evaluation on March 27th, and it's being asked to be completed by March 18th. We have a technology report.
Monday.
Yeah, technology report on March 27th, Countrydale Elementary School presentation on April 10th, an early college credit and Start College Now request approvals on April 10th, academic excellence scholarship recipient approvals April 10th, technical excellence scholarship recipient approvals April 10th, and then health insurance, April 10th, that's tentative, and wage increase, April 10th, tentative. And then I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Mrs. Wachowski.
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. All who are in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carries. We are adjourned at 8:04.